Representative Linu, followed by Christopher O'Brien.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Brian Linu. I'm a state representative from the 45th House District comprising of five towns in eastern Connecticut. I submitted my written testimony for the record indicating my strong opposition to this bill, SB 835. I had the pleasure, a couple of years ago, we're visiting the Women's Center of Eastern Connecticut in Wollmanec, which is the executive director of the Carrying Families Network, Jeremy Bradley, is a great guy, constituent of mine, a great organization, and this bill puts them in jeopardy. And I have Mr. Bradley with me that will share his testimony and give you some details on his concerns about the bill. So I will turn it over to him at this time. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jeremy Bradley, and I'm the executive director of Carrying Families Pregnancy Services in Wollmanec, Connecticut. Some of you may remember me because this is my fourth year testifying against such a bill, and I am here again to testify in strong opposition to Bill 6835. As the executive director of a very vibrant pregnancy center, I am very much proud of the of the work and the educational material support that we've provided to our clients at no charge since 1989. And material support, I mean, those are things that would include things like cribs and car seats and diapers and clothing. It would even be temporary housing. And some of the educational support would include like prenatal care and parenting enrichment programs, mentorships, as well as utilizing our strong community relationships to connect clients with additional care. That could be things like job placement, housing, health insurance, WIC, or any other pregnancy-related referrals. I mean, all in all, we estimate that the communities of Connecticut, we probably have saved them well over a million dollars in the services that we provide since our inception. Because we don't receive any money from state or federal governments, it's we really rely on the passion and generosity of our individual donors to really see a brighter future for anyone dealing with pregnancy-related issues. So we are really excited about the privilege and opportunity to do that and hope to do that in the years to come. However, this proposed bill would really jeopardize the honesty caring work and reputation our organization is providing. We've seen year after year, the committee has been entertaining and proposing legislation that just right out accuses pregnancy centers like ours of actively lying and deceiving women. Even the name of this bill, an act concerning deceptive advertising practices of limited services pregnancy centers, suggests with certainty that organizations like ours are in fact deceiving and misleading women. Also, within the bill, it's very clear the state of Connecticut intends to target only that they consider to be limited pregnancy centers who are predominantly faith-based and bypassing current protection laws that are in place for both consumer and organizations. As some of you may know, Carrying Families was the first to challenge the city of Hartford when they passed that very similar ordinance to what we're seeing here in SB 835. And through the depositions, we again learned the city of Hartford was unable to provide even one person who claimed they were deceived through false advertising of a pregnancy center. And again, also, our time here in this committee over the last several years have kind of netted the same results. Under subpoena and Female Information Act requests that we were able to provide be provided through the lawsuit, there was no documentation of instance of any person ever being deceived or misled in the city of Hartford. And as part of that settlement of the case, the city agreed to provide specific definitions for vague and undefined terms in the law and making clear that the Hartford cannot enforce the law against caring families to restrict or compel our speech. The city also clarified the law does not apply to caring families because we always have a licensed medical provider on site, whatever we provide, what the city considers medical servants. In essence, because we do what we say we do, the law doesn't even apply to us. So raising this bill again in 2021 is really rife with problems. As you can see in my written testimony, I've attached my previous year's testimonies because there are a lot of questions that have not been answered. There's been a lot of concerns that has not been addressed and raised in this committee. And these would have to do with promises that have been made by committee members and elected officials to provide proof, as well as providing some clarification on where this bill could or be. So from that current pandemic that we're in, and, you know, it just seems very, very discerning to see this time and energy being put on an incomplete and misleading bill that is based on information that has been proven to be unverifiable and in some cases even false. And so I really would implore every member of this committee to really vote no on 6835 and really reallocate our time and our energy to places where Connecticut truly needs it. I mean, I would love it if we could kind of join together and be part of a real caring solution for the many families in Connecticut who need support and be part of a and not be part of this poorly conceived and biased bill that will really hinder our reputation, but also will hinder the ability to provide care for our clients in Connecticut. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Summers.
Yes, thank you for, I'm trying to find the person who's speaking on the screen just testified. Thank you, Jeremy, under Representative Linu for testifying today. I just had a question. You mentioned that you had gotten copies of the deposition for the lawsuit in Hartford that I understand was withdrawn. Would you be able to send those to the committee so we would be able to see that those depositions on what you described?
Yes, I could send the depositions to the city.
Okay, that would be.
From the city to the committee. Would you like me to address it?
To the city, right.
Yeah, to the committee, absolutely. Now, there's a bunch of depositions. I would I would suggest sending the two from the city of Hartford, Howard Rifkin, he was the attorney, and he was speaking on behalf of the city of Hartford. And then there was also a person from from their local Department of Health. So those would be the two that I would suggest seeing, but I can send more if you'd like.
No, I mean, because that that came up like in our previous three years of hearing this bill, that Hartford was in the middle of a lawsuit. And so I understand that that lawsuit has been withdrawn. And having a deposition that, you know, sort of counters some of the information that we've been previously been told would be, I think, helpful in decision-making for many on this committee. The other thing is, I don't know if I heard you say this or not, but how many women has your organization helped since you've been, you know, open or your doors are open?
Yeah, that's a hard one to tell because, you know, there was before computers, we had paper files. So but I mean, if we went working off of estimates of what we do per year, you know, we're talking thousands of women.
And have you ever received any complaints on the service that you provide, excuse me? Or have you known of anybody who has complained to DCP about the services that you provide, whether they be faith-based or not?
Yeah, so we have never received any complaints through the state or through our local cities at all, as far as anything having to do with our organization. However, I mean, we have gotten a couple Google reviews because there's a concerted effort out there from from pro proportion activists to actually get together like on a Friday night, open up a bottle of wine, and make fake reviews on pregnancy centers all around the state. So we've had to deal with that. However, we they weren't actual clients. They've just been, you know, mainly college kids and folks that are kind of involved in that activist role doing things like that. We've also discovered through the testimony too, here in the state, the Attorney General testified a couple of years ago during HB 7070, that he didn't have any records of anything here in the states, as well as the Department of Health didn't have anything. And then again, through the depositions, the city of Hartford wasn't able to produce any of that, which was a little troubling because in my testimony here from that HB 7070 is attached to, from that year, we noticed that the mayor and the councilwoman from Utah both said that they had dozens of complaints in the city of Hartford. But those complaints were not anywhere able to be documented or, you know, be produced. And so.
And I recognize that. I remember from sitting through those hearings. But the other thing I have to, you know, ask, does your organization have a way to receive complaints? Because we can all say, oh, we don't get any complaints if we don't have a, you know.
Yeah, so I mean, we have internal mechanisms in our in our organization that we put in through surveys, and we do have a policy in place, obviously, where to receive a complaint and how we would go about doing that. Interestingly enough, one of the big conversations that have come up here before was whether the COOPDA laws through the Department of Consumer Protection could actually do that for pregnancy centers. And so currently on the website, you could go onto the website and file a complaint against the pregnancy center. And I believe what I didn't check it this year, but last year we did check and verify that all the pregnancy centers were able to, you know, you could file a complaint against them if you had a concern. And so there was that was the first concern is whether you could do it. The second concern that was that's been raised was whether there was a gap in enforcement. And that was Attorney General, Attorney General Pong's words when he admits that it's likely there's a gap in enforcement. So one of the things that the pregnancy centers have been trying to lobby this committee to do and consider, but our request had been ignored, was to strengthen the COOPDA laws. So we were not unfairly targeting faith-based pregnancy centers, and to strengthen them to make sure that if there is a gap in enforcement, that everyone in the state of Connecticut is included. We don't believe there is a gap in enforcement, but if there were, we would ask, let's have that conversation. Let's fix that gap. And and that hasn't happened. And this has been several years now since since this was raised. And instead of looking at that smaller, more simple, elegant solution, we're here again, hopefully not for another 24 hours to talk about it.
I will say that, you know, I did look, you, all the pregnancy centers are listed on on the, I think it's DPH website. You can look at it. You can see the complaints. And I did not see any myself. And I actually went to all of the websites to try to take a look to see if I could, you know, with an open mind, look to see if I could find anything that was considered to be deceptive in any way. So I want to thank you for your testimony. And I just wanted to see if you could please send us those documents that you have. That would be helpful for the committee. Thank you.
You do that.
Thank you, Senator. Representative Delphine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Jeremy. And thank you for coming to testify. I have took some time to look over your past testimonies and today's testimony, and I had several questions. So if you wouldn't mind bearing with me.
Sure.
Can you list the services you provide to the community?
Yeah, so I mean, the services that we provide at our organization would include pregnancy testing, would include ultrasounds, would also include parenting, education classes, also would include material support for things like cribs and car seats, you know, diapers, clothing, things of that nature. Other things that we would also be able to provide would be like being a point person to get them connected to community resources. So for things like WIC, for Husky Health Insurance, getting, you know, connected with job placements and housing. And we're not just giving referrals. We're actually available to kind of really help our clients, kind of, you know, through that entire process. Other things that we're able to do is also offer adoption connections as well with the same kind of thing. We're not just giving a name. We're there, we're available to help them walk through the whole process. Because, you know, there are some different adoption plans that would be available to to a client. So, you know, we would help them navigate that space. Of course, we also are providing referrals for prenatal care and getting them into a doctor. A lot of our experience has been with with clients who experience an unexpected pregnancy. They're not quite sure what to make of it. And so they oftentimes put off some of the, you know, the immediate prenatal care. So it's really important for us to be able to help them get connected and find, you know, a doctor and a place for them to, you know, to stay healthy. Some of the other things that we provide too, I mean, are like relational mediations. So again, parent with parents or with a partner, you know, we often step in and help navigate conversations and kind of advocate for our client with what it is that she would like us to help her to do. Other things too is we have, I think, as we heard mentioned before from Hope Line, we have the same kind of support programs in place for for women who have suffered loss and for the men as well, who have suffered loss through miscarriage, through grief there. We've also started something new as well this year called Savanon, which is a sexual abuse and victims kind of anonymous group is a support group and a place for 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 clients to come and kind of really share their story and find healing through what is some very traumatic events. So those are a list of many of the things that we do at our Women's Center in Eastern Connecticut.
Wow, thank you. Thank you for that information. Do you have licensed medical staff, like doctors and nurses, available?
We do. You know, we have we have a medical doctor who's a director, and we also have registered nurses as staff and volunteers as well. And their medical licenses cover whatever medical services they provide. So, you know, a lot, what we found out through this process is, as we moved to this committee, people don't really know anything about pregnancy centers. So but the state law doesn't require a pregnancy center who provides the pregnancy testing and the ultrasounds to be a registered family clinic, although you can be, you're not required to be. And that's just because of the licensing of the medical staff. Their licenses cover all their medical practices. And that's a pretty common thing here in the state of Connecticut and beyond.
Okay, thank you. How will this legislation impact your organization?
Well, I mean, even though this legislation hasn't been passed yet, it's already negatively impacted us. I mean, outside of the time and resources that we've had to go and put in to try and, you know, talk about this and stop the state from really disparaging our work year after year. I mean, we're encountering people in some places at some of the schools and agencies that believe that all pregnancy centers are deceptive because of this legislation and the testimony given here. So this has really hurt some of our partnerships. Some of us have have even documented cases of grant funding that's been removed from us or hasn't been made available to us because of this bill and this testimony given here. And, you know, the legislation itself targets faith-based centers because it's it's our mission not because in our mission, we're not providing abortion. If you read SB 835, if we were to provide abortion, all this would go away. Nobody would be concerned if there was any deception going on. And that's very problematic. And I would say in addition, that, you know, we've heard extensive testimony before this committee where it's kind of like, where it's kind of desired that our free speech be controlled, you know, some people are thinking make same like statements like we can help if you're pregnant or make an appointment with us is being considered deceptive. And I mean, that is not deceptive at all. But these are the things that we're hearing. And just reading through some of the written testimony and probably the testimony you're going to hear throughout today and into the evening, you're going to hear those same kinds of things. Also, the remedy for some of these proposed penalties that we see would allow the Attorney General to be that alone person to enforce everything. And that really could mean squashing and compelling our speech. One of the things we've heard a lot about over the last several years is about location, location, location. If a pregnancy center is located near a family reproductive health clinic, then that is deceptive. If they have a name that they don't agree with, that is also deceptive. And the remedy for that is to tell the pregnancy center that they need to move or rename themselves. And that is not something I see any Attorney General or anyone in the United States having that authority to do. And so I just really concerned about that this targeting of pregnancy centers.
Thank you for that. And you brought up something that came to my mind. I read through the NARAL Pro-Choice Connecticut Foundation report that they put out. And I noticed there was some conflicting reports with regard to where they put the centers. In one in one spot, they were complaining that they were near health, other health centers. And then the other, you know, in another part of the report, it was complaining that they were out in deflated areas where there was no medical providers available for the culture or the community that was there. Do you, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I can speak. So I think you're referring to the NARAL Prices Pregnancy Report that they put out in 2015 and updated in 2018. And I believe they actually call that report the right to lie. So again, a very disparaging title of their report going after these pregnancy centers. And in that report, they do very much target my organization a few times, as well as other pregnancy centers here in the state. And they do it in a very clever way. So for instance, they'll take my mobile unit, and they'll have these two statements. And they'll say that, you know, there's deceptive advertising, and these people are terrible and not transparent. And then they throw the picture of of our mobile unit in between those two comments. And so we kind of see that through the entire report. And that report is really littered with contradictions and with with information that is not correct and not verifiable. One of the biggest things that have happened here, and this I probably brought this up the first time I testified, is that nobody is talking with the pregnancy centers. So there's there's no conversation that's happening with the pregnancy centers. And it really seems to me, by my experience of seeing the information that's been shared through the committee and through those sharing testimony in favor of this bill, that they're all coming from one document, and it's that NARAL report, that that information in that report is the information that they're referencing to be true. And it's really concerning because, again, that is not these pregnancy centers here in the state of Connecticut. And we're not part of that conversation of this legislation. So they were relying on an activist group who's really, honestly, they're allowed to do whatever they want. It's a free country. But their organization is designed to advocate for abortion. And Connecticut has very, very, very healthy and strong laws in place for a woman's right to choose and her reproductive health. And I get maybe there's not a lot for NARAL to do here in the state of Connecticut in order for that. But going after pregnancy centers is not okay.
Yeah, thank you. One of the things that I noted in that report is it mentioned, it said, according to the most recent national data available, nearly half of all the pregnancies in the United States are unintended. I found it interesting that there that you're being accused of deceptive advertising and yet Planned Parenthood, the name in itself isn't saying it's addressing unplanned parenthood. It's actually suggesting that they're they're working with people who are planning parenthood. Do you have anything to say about that? I thought that was kind of an interesting.
Well, I mean, and now this might be your first year on the committee, but that's been raised here several times. And honestly, I think mistakenly, it's been laughed off. Because I think it just really shows the, you know, the double standard here that's being asked of the pregnancy centers. Specifically, if you take a look at the at the pregnancy center in the city of Hartford, that pregnancy centers was was located in like very close to the Hartford GYN, which is also the same place that NARAL shared office space with. So there's clearly there's some relationships there that's really motivated this. But what we saw through that whole process was names like Hartford Women's Center was considered to be deceptive. I'm not 100% sure on this, but I don't believe the Hartford GYN has always been called Hartford GYN. I think their website is actually something to do with the Women's Center. So they changed their name because, you know, because they wanted to target a certain group of people, and that's fine. But then to come back and tell pregnancy centers that we need to be on our heels about the names we choose or, you know, where we choose to set up is very problematic. And just to get back to your point about the location, when they were talking about rural locations, they're probably specifically talking about our mobile unit. And that's that's something that we've really experienced, some real just terrible libel statements coming from NARAL about our mobile unit over the last couple of years. If you if you took a look at one of my testimonies from, I don't know if it was HB 7070 or the year, see, all these things run together. But I shared on my testimony from 2019 on HB 7070, some tweets that NARAL posted about our mobile care van. And now keep in mind, our mobile care van travels to the state, and we're providing pregnancy testing, ultrasounds, and community resource referrals for people who are really struggling. We're seeing people who have low incomes. We've seen people who maybe have some situations at home where they're scared. We're seeing people who may be in this country without the proper documentation. And so what we're doing is we're helping them get them connected to to health and community resources that they need. And so NARAL in that tweet is took a picture of our van and tweeted out that our van was sketchy and that there was stranger danger involved. And so here we have this activist group to going after a pregnancy center's van, saying that really implying that our van is sketchy and stranger danger, that women who are or men who would be involved in this van at all are going to be either molested or killed. Because that's that's what that means, right? Stranger danger is what we tell our kids to stay away from that van giving candy. So this is the this is the kind of just juvenile activity that's been going on on the back end of this. And it's really concerning because, again, my experience has been that the committee's relied heavily on the information that NARAL is providing. And that information is is more than suspect. Some of it's very misleading, and some of it, just looking at this, I mean, I mean, the first appears, the definition that's used in legislation has been borrowed from the NARAL definitions. That's in that very report. So that very report that we're talking about has these definitions in there. So you can you can clearly see that it's the same people that are involved in putting this together. So the first thing right off the bat is the first definition is given about abortion. So it's really a clear indication that this bill opposes pregnancy centers because of their faith-based beliefs about abortion. I mean, also, when we're defining abortion, I would probably also make a suggestion that maybe surgical abortion should be included and not undefined. Moving on to the second part where the clients go, I mean, we wouldn't counter a person who calls or requires a client. So, you know, I wouldn't agree with that assessment. That's somebody who's calling or requiring. A client is somebody that has walked through our doors and agreed to receive our services. You know, I think the definition, we had the same problem with the city of Hartford's ordinance, and we have the same problem here with the state bill, is this idea of health information is way too vague. And the and what could constitute as health information could have anything to do with having a headache or having a pimple. And it's just, it's so vague and so unspecified. Moving on, I think to the next part here, let me turn the page. I think it would be great for the committee if they could tell us who are these medical providers is defined by the state and federal law. This is something too that we've gone back and forth both here in the committee and with the city of Hartford, is their inability to say who they consider to be a medical provider. Is it doctors? Is it nurses? Is it midwives? Or is it an LPN? Is it CNA? I mean, there's all these things that aren't being defined. The city of Hartford just kept saying, well, you know, whatever the state says. So we really need to know what the what the state's recognizing in a term like that. You know, the prenatal care, I think, really needs to be flushed out as a definition. And again, we had the same issue with the city of Hartford's ordinance. The committee kind of in the past hasn't really wanted to flush that out. But I mean, we really need to come to an understanding of what prenatal care is. I think if we move to number nine, when we're talking about Pregnancy Services Center, I mean, we see two different kinds of names being used in this bill. So the bill is being is being called Limited Services Pregnancy Centers, but we're defining Pregnancy Services Center. So I mean, this is maybe this has to do with the fact that things were just copied and past, and people aren't really good at putting this together. But we're just seeing in the bill, there's like two completely different terms being used. So we're defining a term that we're never using, and the term we're using isn't being defined. And again, I think when we're talking about prenatal care, I definitely think that prenatal care includes more than laboratory tests and pelvic exams. So I mean, as far as section one goes, those are some of the notes that I had that I think are just really lacking.
Thank you. Can you speak to section two? Do you have any concerns with the regulations being set forth?
Well, I think, again, so we're back to now using a Pregnancy Service Services Center term is now being called Limited Service Pregnancy Center, right? We see that that change in the wording right there. The committee, I mean, I don't know, they must have really rushed through this because we're seeing that, that, I don't know, I just, and then after seeing that as we're going through this, one of the biggest things that stick out is this idea that they're going to regulate the internet. I mean, we had this long, I sent this amended testimony a couple of years back about this because they want to control the way that, so it was suggested the committee should control the way that Google search results come up. So I mean, I think that's very problematic. And then this idea of a pregnancy center is being responsible for omitting information, that to me seems very vague. And, you know, how would we know what the state would want us to say, you know, especially when the Attorney General would be the one deciding that? So that omission too, again, that was a that was a very strong point that we raised in the city of Hartford's ordinance as well.
So when we're comparing the two different kinds of services that are available with the limit, well, the pregnancy centers and perhaps Planned Parenthood, would you say that, can you can you tell us what perhaps the pregnancy center would offer that Planned Parenthood would? wouldn't?
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm sure we offer some of the same services, like pregnancy testing and ultrasounds. Perhaps maybe the reason for our ultrasounds might be different than their reasons for them. Also, we would also be part of the options counseling as well, the decision aid, if a client wanted to kind of process her situation and walk through some things with us. So those would be things that I know that we would have in common, but the difference there is all our services were provided free, at no charge to our clients. There's no insurance, there's no sliding scale, these services are free because the cost has been provided for them by private donors. But some of the other things, and I listed them out early on, that we do differently would be the material support, like the cribs and the car seats. Some of the other things that would separate us would be some of our support and healing groups, whether it has to do with miscarriage loss or sexual abuse assault. Again, our constant contact with our clients, our willingness to kind of walk them through any type of paperwork or process, whether it's with WIC or job placement. You know, one of our staff sat down with a client just a few days ago to help her work through her resume as she was trying to get ready to get back out into work now that her baby was old enough. And so these are the kinds of things that we're doing that I know that Planned Parenthood's doing. And I would never be one to say Planned Parenthood needs to do this. And so I would also be one to not say Pregnancy Center would need to do this as well.
So you're saying that you're being called a limited pregnancy center simply because you don't offer abortions, is that a fair statement?
That's what it appears to me, that our services are limited because we don't provide abortions. Now, maybe somebody could make a case that we're limited because we don't provide other medical services, but we're not seeing those other medical services being provided in here. The medical services that are in the ordinance would include pelvic exams via prenatal and maybe contraceptions, but specifically abortion, that seems to be that defining difference on why they would want to call us limited. And, I mean, I also kind of really, I'm bothered by that statement, because the things that we do for our community, I would never use the word that we're limited in what we can do. I feel like there's a lot of things that we do, and we're very proud of those things. So that word "limited" is, I mean, is limiting, you know, to what we're really doing out there.
And thank you for that. And it sounds as though you do some unique and interesting things, one of those would be going into the communities that don't have healthcare via your van, is that something that Planned Parenthood does as well?
Well, interestingly, I don't believe they do it in Connecticut, but I think they have done that in other parts of the state, although I don't know how successful that was for them. But for us, we've had a lot of success being able to do that. We've been able to get into communities where people don't have, you know, easy access to public transportation or even their own transportation. So in areas like Hartford and New Haven and Waterbury and Manchester, you know, these areas have really benefited from our presence there, and we're glad to do that.
Do the Planned Parenthood centers offer spiritual counseling and some of those others that, in particular, Representative Fiorella mentioned, that they have here in Connecticut, do they have those at Planned Parenthood?
Well, I don't know if they do. I mean, I've heard this conversation brought up, it's definitely not something that they would specialize in, but I think that maybe some Planned Parenthoods would be equipped and able to put you in contact with someone, maybe, but I don't know. But, you know, again, our missions are different, they're not the same things. So I'm not one to compare myself or keep track of what Planned Parenthood's doing, I'm focusing on what Carrying Families is doing through the Women's Center of Connecticut, mobile care, and providing the resources and support that our clients and our community are asking and needing.
Representative, I beg to interrupt at this moment, you've really asked a lot of questions, I do know there are other people who would like to ask questions. If I could ask you to confine it to one more question, and maybe we'll come back to you later.
Okay. So, you know, you've mentioned some limitations that perhaps both organizations have, so would you say, would it be fair to say that the Limited Services Pregnancy Center name for your organization is unfairly proposed in terms of comparison?
Yeah, I would absolutely say that. And, again, also knowing where that term originated from, through NARAL, I would very much be against that.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, I would appreciate an opportunity to come back and speak to Jeremy some more. I am new to this committee, I did review much of his testimony, and I am trying to get to the bottom of some of the questions I have, thank you.
I fully understand, Representative, we will afford you that chance, we just, you've asked more questions than I can even keep count of at this point, and I did want to afford some other people an opportunity as well. So thank you for understanding. Representative Leinahan, followed by Representative Gilchrist.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate all of that. Sir, can you please, again, state your name and your organization for the record, because it says Representative Brian Lenou on the feed, and I'd like to address you by name.
So my name is Jeremy Bradley, and I'm with Carrying Families Pregnancy Services.
And are you here today representing your personal thoughts, or are you representing the thoughts of the organization for which you represent?
I would say both, they're in line.
Excellent. So earlier in your testimony, you said, and I quote, that your center has bad reviews because women on a Friday night open a bottle of wine and put bad reviews. Do you believe that that is truthful? Do you have evidence to back that up?
Yes, I have evidence of that, and I can support that to you, it's part of a campaign that has gone on over the last several years of writing fake reviews.
So you've been, excuse me, so you've been, I just want to state for the record here, you've been in women's living rooms where they've opened a bottle of wine to have a party and say bad things about your Pregnancy Center, is that what you're stating as fact, sir?
So I can provide you information where that kind of activity was encouraged.
Okay, I'm not asking if that was encouraged, I'm asking if that was fact.
I just told you, I can provide you information where that kind of behavior was encouraged. And that's a concern of mine.
Okay, so your answer then, so your answer through deductive reasoning is, in fact, that that is not known as fact, and that is instead hyperbolic and inflammatory, isn't that correct?
My answer, I think you're missing the biggest problem here, is that...
I'm not missing any problem.
Ma'am, may I speak? Thank you. The biggest problem here is that people are going on Google and posting fake reviews and disparaging an organization that they've never visited or been in contact with, that they don't know anything about. That's the problem, and that's the concern.
I'm not going to be...
I know you're worried, but you're trying to... You do not interrupt the speaker when you've asked a question, allow him an opportunity to finish answering. I apologize, sir.
My apologies, Mr. Chair.
Well, I was just going to say, because that's the issue here, and because this is an encouraged behavior, that's the kind of things that we've had to deal with. And it is concerning to me. It's concerning, but, I mean, maybe it's not concerning to other people, because, you know, that's not part of their day-to-day. But to have people, you know, write bad reviews and negative reviews about an organization that they've never been in contact with, never been to, you know, that's really troubling.
So my concern is that you would come on here and say things and represent them as fact when you don't actually know that they're facts, because you've never been in that living room where someone is opening a bottle of wine and putting those comments. If you wanted to be truthful, you could have said that there has been evidence that you've seen, which would say that this kind of behavior was encouraged, but that is not what you said. What you said was that you represented it as fact, that that was indeed happening. So my question for you is, additionally, in your testimony, you stated that you are concerned that the name of this legislation actually gives your organization a bad rap and makes people not trust your organization. But I would submit to you, sir, that when you come on and testify in front of a legislative committee that is a matter of public record, that is televised for all to see, that making inflammatory and hyperbolic statements that are not actually rooted in fact, but it was simply something that you thought you saw was encouraged online, that that would give your organization perhaps a worse reputation of not being able to tell the truth, as, instead of a bill that simply states that an organization that has deceptive practices is not allowed to do so. Because in one, on one hand, you're telling me that your organization doesn't participate in deceptive practices, but on the other hand, during your testimony, when you're trying to convince committee members of that, you are blatantly saying something that cannot be proven by fact, and it is hyperbolic and inflammatory. So you could see where I would have a big concern about that. Can you agree with me, at least on that point?
I can't, because I've provided you clarification on the context, and you haven't accepted that. And there's not much more I can do. I'm willing to provide you information to support the statements that I said, you know, but, I mean, if you really want to talk about a person's word, if you looked at my testimony that came from last year on SB 144, and this is in regards to your own personal testimony on HB77, in there, you had testified before the committee that you would produce the complaints that were made to the Public Health Department against Pregnancy Centers. Those complaints have not been done, and this has been an ongoing thing of, we're hearing public officials and elected officials, and they're not following through on the things that they're saying in front of testimony. So I'm equally concerned, too, that you would testify before the committee that you would produce these complaints, but these complaints are not being produced. In my testimony, again, from last year on SB 144, I have that link, the video link, and the corresponding timestamps to verify what I'm saying. And, again, I recognize that you're a big supporter of women's reproductive rights, and I'm not here to step on that for you or for anyone else. I'm here to stand in the place here to defend that Pregnancy Centers can exist without interference from people who just have philosophical, different views. And it sounds like to me that you're coming after me personally, trying to take this one comment about drinking wine and trying to turn it into something that it's not. The issue here is there's people that are lying about reviewing businesses, specifically Pregnancy Centers, and you don't care about that, you care about how much or whether they consumed alcohol in the process. That, to me, is not what should be happening here at the committee. What should be happening here, we should be listening to what you're hearing from the Pregnancy Centers as real problems, real challenges, and real problems with this bill, and not trying to pick apart words like that.
Okay, I just have one final question for you, sir. I just want to point out that you tend to go off on tangents that don't actually answer the exact question. So I would like to point out that in my testimony, I referred to the NARAL report, and that report is available, and that report was made to the committee. But finally, I just want to ask you one final question, and then I'm going to move on. I would like to know if your organization does not engage in deceptive practices. You even said for yourself that this bill wouldn't actually apply to you. So in just a one-word answer, so that we can have it, we don't go off on a tangent and around in a circle, do you believe that when this bill passes, that it will actually apply to your organization or not?
So, first of all, I have a problem with this idea that you're saying I'm going on tangents, that doesn't seem a very professional thing to be saying to a person.
I apologize, you don't sound professional, I'm just looking for answers.
In addition to that, just to clarify, the comment that I made about not applying to us was in context to the city of Hartford's ordinance, because of the settlement agreement, that did not apply to us, not because of SB 835. I was talking specifically to the ordinance settlement from the lawsuit.
So do you or do you not believe that this bill will apply to you?
Absolutely, it'll apply to me.
Great, thank you very much.
It'll apply to every single Pregnancy Center.
No further questions, we'll move on to Representative... I'm sorry, I missed that.
I think she hung up on me.
She's still present, so if there's anything else you wanted to say in response to that question? If not, we'll move on to Representative Gilchrist.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for being here, Mr. Bradley. Just wanted to respond to the exchange regarding the name Planned Parenthood. I'm new to the committee as well, and so I didn't partake in that discussion last year. But the history of Planned Parenthood is that it was founded by individuals who both studied how to make birth control, and then created birth control, and then fought for the right for women to be able to access birth control. And so birth control helps women both plan pregnancy and also Planned Parenthood, and so just wanted to clarify that piece.
Can we just, can we also add, too, about, I mean, I have some concerns about the founding of Planned Parenthood as well? I mean, you seem to left out the part about Margaret Sanger and eugenics and wanting to clean the world of other races, so I think that, you know, if you're going to try and rub something like that in my nose, frankly, you should add that as well.
Well, sir, I wasn't trying to rub it in your nose, and there is quite a bit of history about racism in the women's movement, and so I'd be happy to have that conversation with you offline, I think it's an important conversation to have so we can learn and grow. The other piece I wanted to mention is that, this bill, back to the main point, is that the bill is meant to prohibit a certain category of free speech, that of deceptive commercial speech. And so Planned Parenthood is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that's licensed by DPH as a family planning clinic, again, there's that family planning. And so this legislation fills a gap because organizations, agencies like Planned Parenthood are already covered under CUPDA, and so I just wanted to bring us back, in my mind, to the main point of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Zupkis.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, oh, Mr. Speaker, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to just go back for a second, because you had mentioned how this would affect your organization, and I'm curious as to how it will affect you.
Well, again, as one of the points that I've already laid out, just to the... Is it me, or?
Now I can hear you.
Oh, okay. So as I've laid out some of the points here previously in the testimony, you know, we've already experienced some of the negative effects of this bill, because there are people actively saying that Pregnancy Centers are being deceptive and misleading. And what we'll see through the testimony, written testimony and public testimony, I think, again, this time, is you're going to have some people that are going to say, oh, it's not all Pregnancy Centers, however, they're very reluctant to say which Pregnancy Centers are which and which aren't. But there are going to be folks who are going to say that it's all Pregnancy Centers that are being deceptive, and there's written testimony that's been submitted to the committee already that says it's all Pregnancy Centers. So this is the active narrative that's already happening, so I think that's the first part. The second part of it, too, is what is considered to be deceptive advertising? Again, when we start looking to see the things that are being brought up and being told to be deceptive, I would not ever think them to be deceptive. I have a lot of other folks that are in different industries that would agree as well. And so there's a concern there that there's these differing ideas on what they consider to be deceptive. I think that when the time comes, and the executive director from NARAL testifies later this afternoon or evening, in her testimony, she actually screenshots two things that she considers to be deceptive that I would not. And some of the other things that have come up constantly is this bus ad that I think a Pregnancy Center's Birthright runs that says, pregnant need help, pregnant we can help. That is being called as being deceptive. So here's my concern, there's things that we're doing that I am 100% confident about that's not being deceptive, however, people are going to not like what we're doing, and in that effort, they're going to say that this is happening and this is deceptive. And so my biggest concern, not just for my organization, but for our life organizations, is we're going to be spending a lot of time in court, we're going to be spending a lot of time fighting every time something happens or is being accused of that with the Attorney General.
So do you get any money from the state of Connecticut for your organization?
No, we're privately funded, we don't receive any money from federal or state agencies.
Okay. And talking with the, about deceptive, isn't there a law already that prohibits deceptive advertising?
It is, and it's through the consumer protection, but the argument is whether a Pregnancy Center is covered under that law. And, again, I'm just reiterating, the simplest, the most elegant solution is just to close that gap. This way, in the event that there was deception happening through a Pregnancy Center, there would be appropriate and due process to investigate it.
I would agree with that, because I think if it's a law, it is already covered. So I would agree with you on that point. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Again, maybe some of you are able to raise your hands, but I do see Representative Duffinay is still able to raise her hand, and if there is no one else, we will return to you for the second time, Representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I apologize, I was not part of this committee prior to, and I'm just trying to get the best understanding I can and take the opportunity to ask Jeremy questions that I had wanted answers to. So, thank you, Jeremy. As far as section three goes, because we were going through the bill... As far as Section 3 goes, because we were going through the bill, do you have any concerns about the remediation that is being suggested?
Yeah, and I think that this is the area where the Attorney General could really end up compelling speech of the pregnancy centers. So one of the differences between what we saw in the City of Hartford's ordinance and this bill, SB 835, is the City of Hartford also had a second part to it that would require pregnancy centers to post the sign that they don't provide medical services. And this was a very wonky part of the ordinance because it wasn't clear that if you had to put like the essence of putting out the lunch sign, so every time your doctor left the premise, did you have to say you don't have a doctor on site? And so we really worked through that. But because of that part of the ordinance, we've heard this raised, I believe this wasn't part of last year's ordinance as well. So part of that discussion is, well, we're not looking to tell pregnancy centers what to say. But when we start looking at that remediation part of this, it could absolutely be part of the Attorney General's determination to say to a pregnancy center that they have to say this, or they have to say that as in response. There's also, you know, a financial component to the fines that would be very difficult for pregnancy centers. I mean, again, I can't imagine that we live in a world where the Attorney General never mistakenly does something. We see this all the time, and nobody's perfect. Sometimes things aren't what they seem, sometimes new information comes to light, you know, and sometimes people are just wrong. And so, you know, and I'm thankful for the court systems and legal systems here to protect us. But in this case, I mean, the pregnancy centers could really be finding themselves in regular fights and, you know, trying to protect the speech of what they say. Again, one of the things that have come up many times in this committee was whether a pregnancy center would lead on the first sentence on their website or their material, we don't provide abortions. And this is just really contrary to what all businesses and organizations do. This would be like Planned Parenthood saying, we don't provide Bible studies, or, you know, or things like that. I mean, organizations don't lead with the things that they don't do. And again, the people and the folks that are behind this, that are looking to target pregnancy centers, have an ideological difference in opinion about abortion, and that's, again, that's a concern of ours. So as we say, it's not being, you know, infringing on our First Amendment, it's not infringing on our freedom of religion, and, you know, it's so narrowly tailored. But I think it's too narrowly tailored, if that makes sense, because it really shows the cards, and it shows the cards that, you know, if you're not providing abortion in the state of Connecticut, you're going to be under a different set of laws than everyone else.
Well, and you make a good point, and thank you for that, that you would go into a business, they wouldn't tell you what they don't sell, they would promote what they do sell. And so I thank you for that answer. You had mentioned that this is the fourth or fifth year of you opposing similar legislation. What kinds of conversations have transpired before about deceptive advertising?
Well, I mean, I think the most troubling part is, again, that no pregnancy center's really been consulted in the time leading up to these bills, and we've asked to be. I brought this up either a year or two ago, and, you know, I think I was politely told that, you know, this is your time, this is your three minutes is your time to bring this up. But there's a lot to really hash through, there's a lot to learn and discover about what's happening here. Every pregnancy center is different, but a lot of us are the same. So, you know, I think that one of the things that we've seen that happen after all these years is that we're not being included in that. Also, again, I mean, if we could reference my testimony from last year for SB 144, I kind of have a list of things that have kind of transpired here that I think are kind of important to touch on. One of the things is too that we heard the City of Hartford, and I mentioned this already, Mayor Bronin and Councilwoman Bermuda testified that there were dozens of women who were subjected to deceptive practices in Hartford. There's none of that, again, that's been proven or been able to be documented. We heard that, you know, again, Attorney General Tong was unable to verify any complaints a couple of years ago when he first came in. Another thing too is Representative Gilchrist testified in regards to this NARAL report that I would consider to be inaccurate and just littered with mistakes and misleading information. Where, you know, so she testified about this report where she was the previous executive director for NARAL, and she said that she was unable to even confirm if any of the instances in the report took place here in Connecticut. So she wasn't sure what happened here in Connecticut, what didn't happen here in Connecticut. And so there was just a lot of just things there that we weren't able to verify. You know, we also saw that supporters of the bill suggested that the reasons why no complaints were ever made were because women were scared and vulnerable. But, you know, that's not something that has been our experience in pregnancy centers. We see very, very brave, very empowered women who are able to take care of business with their families. So I think there's a more feasible option why we haven't heard any complaints, and that's because there aren't any complaints. Also, in that testimony, it's important, I also kind of put down some of the things that we've discussed as being deceptive advertising. And again, these are the things that are being spoken about in, you know, in reference to the ordinance, excuse me, the bill, but also being spoken by testimony. So some of the things that we talked about is the actual location. So where a building is located in proximity to another family clinic would be considered deceptive. Also their names, and even the communities they're in. We're hearing that pregnancy centers are in the Wong communities. They're by schools, or they're by medical offices, or they're in low-income, needy neighborhoods. So all these things have been suggested to be deceptive. You know, even the organization names, you know, and what colors and fonts they use have been considered to be deceptive, which is really interesting because this idea of the Hartford, and I know you're new to this committee, but the Hartford Women's Center in Hartford is a pregnancy center that's been accused of copying the signage and the font size and coloring of the Hartford GYN, and that's deceptive. However, if you take a look at that whole complex, everybody in that complex has the same color sign with the same size fonts in the same color. So obviously, it's a conformity issue that's happening in that complex that's part of whatever that lease agreement is. But again, these are the kinds of things that people are saying are these, you know, deceptive things that are happening. And, you know, this one really surprised me was the kinds of clothes that people would wear on whether they were being deceptive, you know. And we talked so much about white lab coats, and we even started hearing about that a little bit already. It's this idea of a person in a white lab coat if they're not a doctor. And this is the part that really gets me is the person, the doctors that I know, when I'm interacting with them, they don't wear white lab coats. They're in a tie or a sweater. But the reason you wear a white lab coat is to keep things off of you, right? That's the purpose of these white lab coats. That's why you see people who are butchers wear a white lab coat, or even a pharmacist. It's whatever the chemicals or products they're using, they're using that coat to protect them from that. And so to insinuate that a person in a pregnancy center, because they have scrubs on, again, I've seen a lot of receptionists in medical places wear scrubs. So just to have scrubs on a white coat to be an indication of deception really gets me. And this is the irony of it, is I've seen UConn medical students come in over the last couple of years to testify in favor of this bill in white lab coats at like seven or eight o'clock at night. And so again, lab coats are really the indication that, you know, to protect your garment from your undergarments, from whatever, from it, why are they coming out in public for it? So it's just really wonky watching this back and forth about, you know, what people can wear for clothes and stuff. And this ordinance is even talking uniforms. So a shirt that has a logo, or employer logo now, is an indication that you're a pregnancy center. That makes no sense at all, because that same thing's true for my mechanic that changes the oil in my car. And it's just really a really strange way of kind of, you know, trying to determine what a pregnancy center should or shouldn't look like, you know. And I would probably also say that, you know, I think one of my last points was the words in which the organization uses or doesn't use. Representative Gilchrist suggested pregnancy centers co-opt the language of reproductive justice. And so now, what was being suggested by even a representative that's on this committee when she testified last year, is there's certain words that we're allowed to use and not abused. And we're not saying we provide abortion. That's not what's being, you know, being called up. Words like empowerment are even being called into it. And that's a place where the government has no business in being, is trying to, you know, tell you which words and which sequence of words you can do that. You know, again, I support this idea of all organizations being able to say what they do and stand by that, but there are mechanisms already in place that could regulate and protect both the organization if there were false claims made, and also protect the client if some harm were to come from them.
Excuse me, Representative, I'm going to step in, and I apologize. I know you're new to the committee. We are very eager to hear from everybody who has signed up today. I believe you asked questions now entering into the double digits. As a matter of courtesy, as much as we appreciate that, I'm going to ask that you ask no more than one more question today to this specific individual so that we can move on.
Okay, well, I did have several other questions, and I would have liked to have gotten the answers to those from Jeremy, but I will ask. So what did you mean when you were speaking about elected officials not providing proof? I was not part of the past testimony, so I don't know exactly what you're referring to.
Yeah, so I kind of already touched base on that. We heard some folks like Luke Bronin, Mayor Luke Bronin, Councilwoman Bermuda, Representative, was it Gilchrist, I believe, I mentioned, and Leenham, they were supposed to provide some of this clarifying information. And that stuff has not been provided over it. And it's really hard because this committee seems to be the only time anybody wants to talk about this issue. So when this committee's over, it's over, and nobody follows up on these concerns and these open-ended things. Even last year, Representative Michelle had told me when I testified that he had in hand proof of deceptive advertising from a pregnancy center. I asked for it, and he couldn't find it, and he was looking for it, and he promised that he would email it to me, and I haven't seen that. And, you know, I'm not saying that deception can't happen, but my biggest concern is the things that people are saying are deceptive aren't deceptive. And I think that this is the issue at hand, that sometimes people just don't like or agree with the message you're saying, and that's not the same thing as being deceptive or misleading. That's just having a different opinion.
Well, I thank you very much for the answers to the questions that I had. I would have liked the opportunity to hear more about the lawsuit in Hartford, perhaps maybe another legislator will ask you to elaborate a little bit on that, but thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Representative. I do apologize. In this committee, we do try to give everybody a chance to speak, and we have a lot of people on the list. I'm not sure what other committees have allowed you, but in this case, we try to limit to a modicum of questions and not basically indefinite. Senator Anwar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you would be able to help me, thank you for your testimony, and I just wanted to ask you, you know, why the American College of OB-GYN, all the physicians in the Connecticut State Medical Society are supportive of this bill in less than 10 seconds?
Do I know why? I mean, what does your testimony say? I mean, I don't work for them. So, I mean, you may need to clarify what your point is.
You don't know, but okay. Don't worry. Thank you. I just wanted to, and again, I may not agree with your white coat argument. I am wearing a white coat and...
But you don't wear your white coat out to dinner, do you?
Well, no, but I do also...
And I think that was my point, sir, is that we saw people just wearing it just to make you the impression that they're doc. And that's happened here, and I don't think that that's a good criteria for determining what a pregnancy center is or isn't.
And again, we are all passionate. Sometimes when we are yelling and screaming, I think we lose our argument, but thank you so much for your testimony.
Good. Well, I mean, maybe one of the things to consider too is, you know, these other agencies that maybe have supported this bill, I would ask them, have they visited and interacted with a pregnancy center? And if they have relationships with them, I would think that they would have a little more weight in their conversations. But what we're finding is we're hearing people who aren't actually familiar with the pregnancy centers here in Connecticut.
Mr. Chair, I'm done with the question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Anwar. I just wanted to respond considering my name was brought up. So as I mentioned, I wasn't on the committee last year, and I was asked about the testimonies that I referenced, and on February 15th of 2019, I did the entire Public Health Committee to link them to the testimonies I was referring to, which are located in the 2018 report. Obviously, you explained that you don't validate that report, but in the back of that report are testimonies from Connecticut women. Anyone else with questions or comments for Mr. Bradley? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Bradley.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Representative Gilchrist, there are two people. If you open the participants window, Senator Wong, you have your hand up.
Oh, I see, sorry about that. Senator Wong.
Madam Speaker, I believe Representative Cavros de Croupp came before me, so I'd be happy to defer to her first.
Okay, thank you. I just opened up Representative.
Just briefly, in terms of the white lab coat, you know, I just wanted to mention that that's a really big ceremony when doctors receive that. It's actually been since 1993. I'm sure Dr. Anwar can attest to that. But it's a really big deal when they are awarded their lab coats, and I understand that there are other, you know, professions that might wear them. But perhaps I missed it, but are there specific medical procedures that you're performing that that would be the reason why you have that lab coat on? Because otherwise, I guess it says that maybe an apron or something of the like would do just as much to protect the clothing as a white lab coat, which, you know, does in people's minds has always been associated with, you know, specifically doctors. You know, I think that that's perhaps something that you could clarify for us.
Sure. I mean, so my understanding is registered nurses and doctors don't wear aprons. So I mean, I don't think that's a common practice I've seen in hospitals or doctors, maybe in a kitchen. So I'm not sure that that would be the best suggestion.
Right, but I think for your specific, you know, you said it was to protect the clothing underneath, so I'm just curious.
Yes.
What procedure is being performed?
Yeah, so in my organization, we don't wear white lab coats. I'm just pointing out the fact that the reason that white lab coats exist is for the simple fact of protecting the clothes underneath. So it's not an indication of whether that is...
Yeah, so not in your organization.
Part of the definitions of this ordinance.
At others, yeah. Perhaps at others, they're wearing them, and that would, you know, cause some people to be confused about the services with which they're receiving and from whom.
Well, I mean, again, we've gone through this. I was trying to fill in the representative on things that she's missed. We've gone through this year after year. We brought up all the folks that wear white lab coats. We've talked about all the reasons why it shouldn't be a criteria or some sort of discriminatory, you know, piece that should go against a pregnancy center if there was somebody in a white coat. Again, the ordinance specifically is even dealing with scrubs, and that is very problematic because, I mean, that's what a lot of doctors and a lot of nurses and licensed medical professionals are wearing when they're interacting with the public, so.
Right, and that's usually because they're performing a procedure. Thank you so much. I'm finished. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Representative De Croupp. Senator Wong.
Thank you. I guess I would call you Madam Chair right now. That being said, thank you, Mr. Bradley. I've been watching this and listening quite intently, and obviously, on both sides of the argument, we are evoking very strong emotions. And I would encourage that as a part of a democratic process, that we all respect each other's perspective in offering different viewpoints. And I really appreciate your passion. And if I may, your organization, Caring Families, has it ever been accused of deceptive advertising practices?
So when you say accused, accused by who?
Oh, no, no. A complaint filed against your organization.
Yeah, so no, we have never had a complaint filed against our organization. The only accusations of any deceptive advertising for Caring Families has come directly from NARAL.
And they have not filed any formal...
They have not.
Okay, and for many of your peer organizations, from your experience, the best of your knowledge, have many of them had formal charges filed against them versus the kind of social media hits and misses that occur on both sides of the argument?
So to date, my understanding is there is no pregnancy center here in the state of Connecticut that has had any type of complaints filed against them for deceptive or misleading advertising. All that, for lack of a better word, rhetoric has come from the NARAL about that.
Thank you. And if that is indeed the fact, I do find it interesting that we are raising a bill in such contentious and challenging times when there were really no formal complaints and basis, just innuendos both sides back and forth. And I find it also interesting that our Attorney General... that our Attorney General would look to vie into this conversation as well. And so that's just my observation on that. Number two, and I think most importantly, as we go further into this conversation, is your passion, your mission of your organization, is it deeply faith-based?
It's, I always say it's equally faith-based as opposed to experience-based. When I was, when I found myself 20 years old with my girlfriend, we were in a situation with an unexpected pregnancy. And that was a really difficult time for us, you know, being third year students at college, trying to navigate how we're going to finish and do all this. This was actually at the University of Connecticut at the time, and I remember my girlfriend going, and I went with her to the medical center, and the medical center there was only able to really provide us with information on having an abortion. And that's not something that we wanted to do. We wanted to find other ways for us to be parents, other ways for us to get connected with help and resources. And so that, for me, is really where my passion is born out of, because having experienced that, having known what it's like to be in that difficult situation, and, you know, we talk about choice, but it seemed like in that point at 20 years old, my girlfriend had no choices before her to be able to stay in school, stay on campus, be a mom, and complete her classes. And so that's really where my passion comes from, you know. And it's been 23 years later, and we're married, and our oldest son is one of the greatest choices we have, one of three boys. And I'm just thankful for that. I'm thankful for, you know, that experience that I had and wanting to be able to help other people in the way that I wasn't able to be helped in that place. And that's, you know, that's a big part of my passion here is for caring families, is I want to make sure those resources and support systems are there, and they know that they're there, and know that they're not going to have to go through this alone.
You tell a very compelling story, Mr. Bradley, and congratulations on many years afterwards and the family that you have. Credit must be given to you. And you also recognize that at that difficult time in your life, challenging time, you had to make some important decisions for yourself and your loved ones. And I hope, as you advocate for your organization, you also respect that each individual at that moment in time is afforded the opportunity to make their own choice. Would that be a fair statement in your belief as well?
It is. And that's part of our core values of our organization, is that we respect the decision every single client makes. And so if we're providing support for parenting and adoption, and that client chooses and makes the decision to have the abortion, then, you know, there's nothing that we're doing to stop them. We're not trying to talk them out of it. We've already had the conversation. We've already shared all the things we can share. And we just let them know that we're still here for them. They walk out that door, we let them know we're still here for them. The things that we talked about, you know, those pressures that you're feeling in your life, you know, those things that are kind of coming down on you, whether it's work or family or housing, whatever those problems you're going through, we're still here for you. We're still committed to working through that and supporting you through whatever you do next. So, yeah, we're very comfortable in that space, and thank you for bringing that up.
Well, I think this is the way that approach. I hear such passionate viewpoints in the initial onset of this hearing, but I also heard your story and your decision-making process, as emotional challenging as it is. I think all parties can agree that for those people that go through that struggle even right now, that they are afforded a choice to make their own decision. And I'm really glad to hear you say that if individuals choose to make a decision other ways, that it's their decision. And so I appreciate that, and I'm glad that we can find similarities and agreement in that respect. That being said, I think it's important to ask why I asked the second phase, as to is your organization and the approach beyond the personal experience, is it faith-based? Because I think one of the important questions I have is, as we embarked on addressing this bill when it was first raised, I am extremely concerned that it seems to be targeting faith-based organizations. And it might cross the line, as Representative Fiorello cited earlier, that there is some constitutional and Supreme Court basis of separation of church and state. And so I ask you of that from your organization, is it strongly faith-based or is it personally based upon your experience and your mission?
Yeah, it's both of those things. So that's where my passion comes from. So for me, my passion comes from that. I am also a person of faith, and so that faith compels me to show love and care and support for all of the people here in the world. So, yeah, and part of that is we do have a belief that human life is valuable in all its, from the moment of conception to the point of death, and it needs to be cared and protected through that. And I recognize that everyone shares our views. Again, we're not out there telling all the people that they need to bend to what we're saying. We're asking for us to be able to exist in this space without having things in our speech control. And, you know, it's interesting, one of the testimonies, one of the written testimonies that I was reading through it was from an organization, I think it was Secular Connecticut. And, you know, they're really big on the separation of church and state, and they made the point that this bill does not mention religion at all. However, the deduction of this, I think, is very important, is why do faith-based pregnancies and centers not provide abortion? And the answer is that is because they're faith-based. And so therefore, regulating pregnancy centers, you are regulating faith-based organizations. And again, the SB 835 is very clear that it's about abortion because not only do they define it, but they use that as the term on whether or not this law would be enforced against an organization, is whether or not they would provide it or not.
So I thank you very, very much. And Madam Chair and to the administrative clerk, I just wanted to make sure for a point of clarity in this Zoom world, if we could change Mr. Bradley's name from Representative Lanoue, so that people can identify, and if they popped in right now, they would not get the clarity and presume that this is Mr. Representative Lanoue. So if there's any way we can change his name on the screen for future conversations, I think that would help in clarity. So thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the interest to ask the questions. And thank you, Mr. Bradley.
Senator, can I just follow up on your question as well? This is not Representative Lanoue. Madam Chair, Mary also addressed a question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to just follow up, you know, with talking about curving out this one industry, these pregnancy care centers. I think this works both ways. You know, this man has devoted his life to work to helping women in need, helping women with unplanned pregnancies, and fathers as well. He has his own story. And the mobile van they have to do pregnancy testing and ultrasounds at the foot of that is part of the caring families network and at the women's center in Eastern Connecticut. The organization that is really advocating and lobbying this legislation, this bill, has put out advertising, has put out on the internet, referring to, quote, calling this van stranger danger, a sketchy van. With what evidence do they have to call this stranger danger? That term is very synonymous with warning kids, trying to keep kids safe. And what we need to make sure, if we go down a road of deceptive practices, what recourse does he have to address that as well in these type of pregnancy centers, when there is a language like that being used against them? So I'd just like to add that for the record. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Representative Lanoue. You were just confused after I made the request to change to Mr. Bradley. And I appreciate your comments, and it allowed me to clarify my conversation and dynamics. I appreciate Mr. Bradley's sharing of his personal experience. And I, for myself, believe in an individual's right to choose. And in this case, Mr. Bradley made the decision for himself and his then-girlfriend, but I also respect for others that may choose an alternative decision. And that's important to note, that as we begin these discussions, for those people that may be supportive of the separation of church and state and supportive of organizations like yourself, it is not a statement against choice. And I think Mr. Bradley's personal experience in articulating that they made a choice, and that choice is a freedom afforded to them as Americans and as residents of Connecticut, that should be the theme of this conversation. It is the theme that guides me, that individuals have a choice and that choice is protected in this country. So thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Bradley and Representative Lanoue.
Thank you, Senator Wong. Thank you, Representative Lanoue. Next is Senator Summers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to state something for the record here, that I think the idea of somebody wearing a white lab coat, conversation about who wears what as a uniform, is a really slippery slope. Because I had a biotech company for 25 years in Connecticut. We all wore white lab coats over scrubs. You go to some medical offices, and the receptionist wears scrubs and white lab coats. So I don't think that the idea that somebody wearing a white coat is in any way deceptive or implies trying to present yourself as something that you're not. I think that that's something that if we're going to have that conversation, it's going to be a really, really slippery slope. So I just wanted to make sure that we said that I'm actually, my husband is a clinician, he's a doctor, a heart doctor. He wears scrubs every day because white coats are not sanitary anymore with COVID. So I think that is a conversation that, you know, is, we're not going to, it's going to derail. And I think that we need to stick to the facts of what this bill is, which is supposedly deceptive advertising practices. And, you know, so far or to date, we've only gotten through one poor person to testify. But it appears that there's a lawsuit that was filed that was withdrawn. The Supreme Court has upheld a case talking about, you know, something similar that has been upheld. So the title of the bill is deceptive advertising practices. So I really think that that's what we should focus on here, not what somebody is wearing. And unless we can have proof that that is what's happening, I think it's important, regardless of where you feel, I'm somebody who feels that you should make your own choice. You have Planned Parenthood that can provide services and, you know, potentially termination advice, if that's something that somebody wants. And you can also have the counterbalance that provides a different alternative. And I think it's important that we're not targeting one or the other, actually, in this conversation. So I just wanted to say that about the white coat. I don't want this to get derailed on what people are wearing. And I think it's important to keep the context of the bill in line there. Thank you.
If I could just clarify, Senator Summers, as far as the lawsuit goes to the city of Hartford, it was not withdrawn. It was actually a settlement. So we settled with the city of Hartford, and this is important because that really forced to the table some changes to that ordinance, and also provided, you know, a statement from the city of Hartford to say that they were going to enforce this against us. And we've also made it very clear with the city, and they're aware of this, as well as anybody else who asked me, if the city of Hartford were to ever try to enforce the ordinance against us, then that ordinance would, that lawsuit would start up again. Because again, nothing has been settled constitutionally in the fourth. So this has not been ruled as the appropriate, you know, and illegal way of them going about it. It's just that we've come to an agreement at a settlement.
Okay, thank you. I would, I also would like to just remind everybody that in the state of Connecticut, we have hospitals that perform terminations and hospitals that don't perform terminations. But the hospitals that are not performing terminations are not targeted because they don't. There's choices here in the state of Connecticut, and I think it's important that we keep those choices. We may not agree with those choices personally, but that we keep those choices available for people who are seeking the choice for that particular situation. So, thank you. I just want to make sure we keep the context of the bill. And I think it would be helpful if you could send us all the information on the lawsuit that you have that we could share with the committee. That would be
I will do that today.
Thank you, Senator Summers. Representative Burge is
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your testimony today. I have a comment and a few questions for you. And I apologize if people have already asked this. Excuse me. I'm just confused as to why people feel there's a problem. And my question to you is, over the last one, two, three years, how many complaints have been filed with the Department of Consumer Protection that you
Yeah, so we did address this. There's been zero complaints filed with the state or any city agencies. So no
And how long? How many years?
As, no complaints ever. I guess I would say we don't have a record of any complaints being filed against a pregnancy center.
Okay. And then, if I'm, if I'm in my youth, a younger woman that would come into the pregnancy center, into your pregnancy center, and I come in asking, I want an abortion, and you realize that, obviously, you tell me that we don't do that, and you explain to them that you're a faith-based center, and you say, you know, you have other options, have you considered adoption, and you start talking to them, then I should make that decision. This isn't the place I want to be. I definitely want an abortion. I appreciate you giving me these other options. And then you leave. And then you go and find the abortion clinic that you were looking for. I don't understand, and I know this is a very emotional time for women on both ends, but my concern and my question is, why is that a problem? I'm, it's my body, it's my decision. If I don't want to keep this pregnancy, then I walk out and leave. And I'm assuming, you know, that's what you do. When someone, you're talking to someone, and they say, listen, I really want an abortion, you're like, I'm sorry, we don't do that. We can counsel on this, but this place isn't for you.
And so if somebody were to call us or walk into our center or our mobile unit and tell us that they were looking for an abortion, we would be right up front with them and let them know that we would not be providing, could not, and would not be providing that. However, we would invite them if they wanted to talk about other options or talk about other things. They would consent to that. And at that point, if they consented, then they would be kind of invited in as that client relationship. So, you know, that would absolutely have to happen. And I, you know, I can tell you, we have a large majority of the people that we interact with are looking to have an abortion, but they still want to come in and talk through the other options. And we're available to do that. And so, and we're comfortable in that space, as I mentioned before. So, yeah, I would agree that it's important for the woman's choice and autonomy in this matter, and we're totally respectful of that. And we're also very upfront about it. And again, there hasn't been any complaints filed here. You know, the complaints and stories that are being referenced through the NARAL report is very interesting, is that they're second or third-hand information that's happening in those reports. It's not even, you know, coming sometimes from the client. And a lot of those testimonies are from volunteers and staff of NARAL through their secret shopper campaign where they decided to go into pregnancy centers as fake clinics, as, excuse me, calling us fake clinics as fake clients. And they come up with a fake backstory and interact with us and all this stuff. So, yeah, so again, nothing's been documented on the state and federal level.
Right, because I would be the first
Or not federal, but local.
I'd be the first one. I'm sure everybody on this committee, if we had complaints, and many complaints over years and years, would all be willing to jump on board with this. But like I said before, if there's not a problem, why are we creating, trying to create a law for something?
I would also suggest that some of the complaints that's happened, it seems like NARAL has been able to get their hands on a lot of testimony about, you know, alleged complaints of people who have felt like they've been misled or deceived. I'm not understanding why not one of those clients have ever been walked through a process of filing something formally with the town or the state. And we also have a testimony, that's written testimony that we hear, again, about an emergency physician who was around 25 years ago, right, I think, and the same thing happened. And I'm just not understanding why we don't have these professional people concerned and willing to walk through this with a client to make sure there's complaints. And, I mean, again, I'm concerned about any deception, when I'm specifically dealing around women's health. However, in this particular instance, you know, they're looking for a solution to a problem that's just not there.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. I believe that is all of our questions for Mr. Bradley and Representative Lanoue. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much for being here today.